Divisional statement. The vision of Lincoln County Schools is to empower every student with the knowledge and skills necessary to become college, career, and citizenship-ready by providing high-quality education and enriching opportunities in every classroom, every day. Mission statement: Every student, every classroom, every day, college, career, and citizenship-ready.
Uh, there are gonna be a couple of changes in our agenda. We said that, um, let's see. HI on the last page, uh, that's going to be tabled as a long march. These are contracts that need to be printed. Do I hear motion to set the meeting agenda?
I'm making a motion.
Tyler first.
Thank you.
Jen second. Vote Lisa?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And I vote yes. No, turn it, I'm sorry. Turn it over to Mr. Smith for our recognition.
Okay, we really enjoy having this part of our agenda. So we'll start with our recognitions from each school. So we'll have early childhood children present theirs first. Once you come up and get your certificate, if you will go back to the red, uh, stand there, Brad will take your picture, okay?
So the student we would like to recognize is Riley Adams. Riley has made so much progress this year. She perseveres every day to become even more independent. Riley is always kind to her friends and brings everyone with a smile. We are so proud of Riley for all of her accomplishments this year.
Uh, the next member we would like to recognize is Ms. Melissa Reed. She is an early Head Start teacher, um, who has dedicated over twenty years in the classroom to teaching the students and preparing them for Head Start preschool. Melissa has great classroom management and individualizes targeted skills for children to make progress in learning. Children leave her classroom prepared and ready for the next chapter in their educational experience. We appreciate the dedication Melissa has for our students and families.
A teacher I'd like to recognize, I don't believe could be with us tonight, uh, it is Emily Mayne here. She's our fourth grade math and science teacher. And what I wrote about Ms. Mayne here, Emily is the type of science teacher I wanted to be. Knowledgeable, dedicated, expertly, and innovative, to name a few. She often arrives early and stays late. She loves students so much that she holds them accountable to high expectations. She is long-suffering, patient, and relentless in realizing her goal of ensuring our students have a top-notch educational experience. And I will be sure that Ms. Mayne here, uh, gets that tomorrow. Uh, and then I have a student here I'd like to recognize, Maddie Petrie. I don't believe Maddie can be with us tonight. Uh, Maddie was a schoolwide winner and countywide second runner-up for the twenty-four, twenty-five Lincoln County Conservation District art contest. Maddie uses her talents and skills to enrich her own and others' understanding of the world around them. Not only is she a talented artist, but she's also on the ABR role and showed tremendous growth on her recent math and reading I R E diagnosis. And that was Maddie Petrie. Uh, I do have something special to say this evening that goes along with these recognitions, and if I get too windy, you just, uh, get the hook thing and pull me off, but, uh, last Thursday, I don't want to incite any emotion, but last Thursday morning, uh, was a, it was kind of an uncertain and scary morning for parents and teachers and students. We had some severe weather that was pelted through the area, and, uh, we were having the offload buses on the bus ramp unexpectedly, even high school and middle school students. And, uh, I, just, just quickly describing what it was like, I was standing there on the bus ramp at Crab Orchard. I was semi-under the loop, just drenched. It was just a deluge of just dumping water. Uh, buses were unloading, it was dark, it was wet, there was lots of movement, the adults were ushering the kids in. And on one particular bus, there was a kindergarten student, and this kindergarten student has some challenges that, uh, he or she is, uh, overcoming, and it's, uh, it's oftentimes fight, flight, or freeze, and this particular kindergarten student froze at the top of those steps. There was a gap between he and I, and I could not get to him, and I was motioning, "Come on, come on, you can do it, come on," and, and it was just a torrential downpour. And, and this student kind of got lost in the shuffle, his siblings had already gone in or were further back in the back of the bus. And I looked up and I saw the silhouette of a former student, and he was standing there atop the bus, and he looked at the student, and he looked at me. He looked at the student, and he reached out his hand, and he took that kindergarten student by the hand and letting down the steps to safety. That just touched me. I, I, I so much appreciate Tayshaun Terry, a former cub that we had at our school, whose acts of courage and kindness have inspired our students and teachers. On February sixth, during emergency bus unloading due to severe weather, Tay observed a kindergarten cub in crisis and chose to calmly and reassuringly intervene. Tay willingly led the student out of harm and into safety, embodying the values that we strive to teach all of our students. Tay, you're a good human, and I am so proud of you.
Next, the student we would like to recognize from Highland is James David Gaddy. James David is an exceptional student whose dedication to excellence has set him apart in both academic and extracurricular activities.
James David has a strong work ethic, intellectual curiosity, and leadership qualities, making him a role model for peers. He is a gifted learner, participating in various activities in our GT program. He won the Highlands spelling bee and competed and placed in the district competition. In addition, he has been selected to participate as a legislative page in Frankfort. Most recently, he competed in the fifty-third district governor's cup competition, placing first place in science and second place in language arts. And next, I would like to recognize his wonderful mother, Ms. Gay. If you will come on down. Ms. Gay is an outstanding teacher whose dedication to her students and passion for teaching have made a profound impact at Highland Elementary. Known for her creative lesson plans and ability to engage students through the use of technology, she creates a positive and inclusive environment where every student is challenged to succeed. Ms. Gay's patient nurturing approach fosters a love of learning and helps students build confidence and a strong foundation for their future education. She goes above and beyond assisting with planning school activities, designing grade loads, or meeting whatever need our school has, and she has served twenty-five years in Lincoln County, so we would like to congratulate her.
Okay, next one, Mr. Lawrence from East of Illinois.
Uh, we will start with the student we'd like to recognize, Mr. Junior Rogers. Junior's a second grader. Uh, his teacher said about him, "He's a hard-working and respectful student who always shows kindness and consideration to others. He sets a great example by staying focused, helping classmates, and exceeding expectation. He treats peers, teachers, and other adults in the school with respect, making him a true role model in the classroom." Congratulations. He's one of those students that makes me feel humble, that has his hands and his arms, and it's not just so. Uh, the teacher we'd like to recognize is Ms. Dale. Hiding in the back. Ms. Dale deserves recognition because of her unwavering dedication to creating a positive and supportive learning environment. Her constant smile reflects her enthusiasm and genuine care for her students' well-being and academic success. What truly sets her apart is her exceptional classroom management skills. She creates a structured yet welcoming atmosphere where students can thrive, focus, and develop a love for learning math. We appreciate it.
The student we would like to recognize tonight is Bailey Hall. Bailey, if you want to come on up with me, please. Bailey notices the needs of voters in her classroom, especially one student in particular. She helps this friend with many everyday tasks, such as logging onto the computer, locating supplies for assignments, tying shoes, helping with the coat and folder, and advocating for this friend if help is needed. It's also been discovered that she brings snacks and even things at lunch to help out this little buddy. She has, sorry, I lost my place. She's just the kind of kid that sees a need and acts on it. She does all this without braving on herself or bringing any attention to her good deeds. She is humble, she is patient, she is understanding of others, and she's exactly what we hope to see in all of our kids. Congratulations. She's great. Her teachers have written a very beautiful nomination form, and I had to condense it some, so that was the shortened version, but it was, it was beautiful. Our next recipient is Ms. Hale. I know she's here, I saw her. Now, now she has to come up here, which is not something that she loves, but she'll do it because she's wonderful. Ms. Julie Hale, folks, she has dedicated the last nine years to the students and staff of Stanford Elementary School. She has served as our reading interventionist and worked directly with our students. She's also served as a constant and trusted source of reading instruction in our building. She has taken on letters training, which is a two-year commitment, and has encouraged others with her new learning and the refinement of great reading instruction. Her smile, infectious laugh, and fantastic sense of humor makes our building a better place today. Congratulations.
Next, one of our recognitions, Stanford Elementary.
Okay, good evening. As I say each time, we call this award the Be The Spark Award, because that is our theme at Waynesburg this year. So our first recipient of that award is Anna B. Johnson, a second grader, so come on down. Anna B. always tries her best, she is kind to all of her classmates and very respectful to all the adults in the building. She follows rules and expectations to a D. She also helps others in class by being a great leader, and she has a smile that lights up the room. Uh, we are so lucky to have her at Waynesburg, and that's what all the teachers said about you, Anna B., so congratulations. Okay, our staff Be The Spark Award recipient is Ms. Tabitha Bullock. She could not be here today because the crud is going around Waynesburg currently, and she is sick. But Mrs. Bullock, she is our bookkeeper, she consistently goes above and beyond demonstrating an exceptional, exceptional commitment to excellence in all that she does. She has a positive, fun attitude and makes everyone feel at home. She helps to make Waynesburg Elementary a special place for staff, students, and families, and she's kind of my right-hand person and helps me be successful each and every day. So very thankful for Ms. Tabitha Bullock.
Next, Mr. Starch, come up.
All right, the middle school would like to recognize for our staff member of the month, Ms. Kayla Smith. Mrs. Smith is an amazing school counselor. In her role, she creates a safe space for all students, some of whom describe her as a cool person to talk to and a trusted adult. A teacher explained, "If I want to know what is up with the kid, I ask Mrs. Smith, and she always knows." As a trusted and reliable counselor, Mrs. Smith not only loves and cares for our students, but also works tirelessly to fill in the gaps and provide support to our staff. Through her dedication to the needs of our students and to support her colleagues, Mrs. Smith has earned all of our respect and admiration. And for our student of the month, uh, we would like to recognize Kai Hawker Correa. Uh, she is not here with us tonight. This is one of our many talented students who last month was on the Beta Club trip, and this month, uh, is participating in a wave volleyball match, but I'd still like to read her, uh, her dedication. Kai is a student who puts extraordinary effort into everything that she does. She is a perfect example of what following our rise expectations is meant to be. She goes out of her way to help her fellow classmates without being asked but prompted by a teacher. She is always willing to answer questions and is someone that all of her peers enjoy interacting with. She doesn't seek the spotlight, and leadership by example gets her noticed in the most positive ways.
All right, we'll start with our students, uh, from the high school we want to recognize this month. The first one is Jordan Hall. Uh, Jordan Hall recently took on first place in the Unified Region Bowling Tournament. He's worked hard to improve his skills and has performed at a high level. He's represented Lincoln County well, and we are incredibly proud of him. That was a big, a big honor and a big task, so congratulations. All right, our next student, uh, goes along with Jordan there, Chris Shelton. And as I put there, he also took on first place in the Unified Region Bowling Tournament, and again, of course, has worked hard to improve his skills as well. They did a great job representing Lincoln County, and we're very proud of them. All right, and then the staff member that we're going to recognize is Mr. Skylar Gilford. Uh, Mr. Gilbert is a new social studies teacher at Lincoln County High School this year. He's joined the staff and he's hit the ground running. His class is full of diverse learning experiences each day, even on the most challenging of days. He has a smile on his face, and he is continually seeking opportunities to improve his craft as a teacher. We're very excited to have him as a part of our Patriot family.
Here we have another special recognition, Chief Middleton.
I'm here today, and we'd like to recognize Mr. David Ledford. Where'd he go? I don't know. As he's making his way up, Officer Pete sent in a nomination for a meritorious service award, uh, on behalf of Mr. Ledford for some actions he's taken, and I'll read off part of this. "On Monday, November twenty-fifth, while supervising an after-school car rider line, Mr. Ledford observed a vehicle driving in an unsafe manner near children and staff. Recognizing the possibility of imminent danger, he acted decisively, putting himself at considerable risk to intervene. With remarkable composure, he approached the vehicle, persuaded the impaired driver to stop, and secured the keys before summoning assistance. His quick thinking likely prevented the driver, whose blood alcohol content was later found to be nearly four times the legal limit, from causing a serious accident. While waiting, Officer Pete, who was on campus, Mr. Ledford ensured the safety of the children and the vehicle, coordinating with other staff to remove them from the scene. He simultaneously managed traffic around the parked car and maintained order in protecting everyone in the vicinity. Mr. Ledford's calm demeanor and courageous actions undoubtedly saved lives and spared the community from a devastating event. His leadership, humility, and unwavering dedication to the safety of others embody the highest standards of civic duty." So I want to present this certificate of compensation to Mr. David.
Okay, the board will send it easy right now. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you'd like to excuse yourself,
At this time, we would like to drop the comments. My name is Max Hester. My wife, Gail, and my son Kyle and I became residents of this county in two thousand and one. I came to be a pastor here in town, and my wife was serving as an elementary school teacher at Stanford Elementary. And I just want to say thank you. A lot is happening in our world, a lot is happening across our country, a lot is happening in our county and our Commonwealth, but one of the things that I delight in seeing what just happened, recognizing kindness is done of people who just did it without thinking, apparently, because they're shaking their heads like, "What are you calling my name for?" And, um, I noticed several folks I recognized from thirteen years of serving as a volunteer, primarily at Stanford Elementary, uh, sir, going in the classrooms with a pan on my head dressed as Johnny Appleseed. And the part we tried to fit into that family life curriculum was be kind to one another. In our world today, when there's so much confusion and chaos and going zones, that still stands, be kind to one another. But especially to you all, from our student member all the way to our superintendent and the board members, thank you for your time, your effort, your kindness to help empower students of this county. Thank you, question?
Amen. I don't think we hear that often enough, but we greatly appreciate it, Max. You see the student and staff report, any questions?
We need to do that. We need to get a strategic plan.
I guess, yeah, Mr. Evans is here, so I'm sorry, I just had to...
That's all right.
Strategic plan presentation about this.
Good to see you all. It's just like we're having another strategic planning session. I see so many familiar faces, and if I didn't get to shake your hands, not because I didn't get to work around, but I wanted to say hi to all of you and just thank you personally. So excellent job. Uh, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Jim Evans from KEDC, the Kentucky Educational Development Corporation, and I've had the privilege to work with just an amazing group of wonderful people in your district, starting with you as board members. And blessed to meet you two new board members, and I didn't get to meet the student rep, and just congratulations, but I can't say enough about the positive things that you all had going on in your district that I saw just from being a facilitator and being part of strategic planning. So that starts with the board, that starts with your superintendent. So, um, just like your community member said there, I, I can repeat those accolades because I witnessed it for a little over two months every time I was in this district. So, um, tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about strategic planning. Your plan is actually about twenty-five pages long, but we're not going to go page for page. Stakeholders out here, they probably know, uh, everything that's in this because I know that they were the heart of the work. So what I've given you all, board members, you all have a packet, and it actually has the plan, and Colleen has the plan, and then you have a one-pager, um, up on the screen there, and then we'll just talk a little bit about it. I do want to say, again, baby, congratulations on that, well-deserved. It takes guts to get out and do something like that, but heavy-duty the right thing all the time. So when you want to celebrate those kids, that just warmed my heart because that's what it's about, recognizing those babies. You may change a life by doing what you did tonight, so just outstanding. I can't say enough positives about the work y'all are doing here. But anyway, a few months ago, we started on this strategic planning journey together. I met with Bruce probably a month prior to us deciding to move forward with this, so he asked me to come and present to the board. The board said, "Let's move with it," so we did, and he pulled together a stakeholder group of community members, staff, just a wonderful group of people, uh, again, that I was blessed to work with for a couple of months. So your plan is complete, but let's talk a little bit about it and how you got there. So, um, first few sessions, we started with norms. First session, we started with norms about how we're going to conduct business in the district, each of it that we had. So, again, stakeholders created those norms, they voted on those, they agreed upon them. But your one-pager is a little bit out of order because we didn't start with vision, mission, we actually started with core values and belief statements. So let me talk a little bit about those. So jumping back just a little bit here, purpose of strategic planning is really is an actual roadmap for your district for the next five years. That's not to say that there won't be changes as you move along, as you monitor this, because there'll be some things that you can implement pretty quickly, some things in two or three years you're going to be saying, "We haven't, why haven't we got to this yet?" Well, it may not be time. So, but strategic planning aligns your district priorities with measurable goals, and you all heard me say this, and, um, so now we're going to highlight the key focus areas. But we started with values and belief statements, and the values that we landed on, we're going to go a little bit out of order here. Um, and I know you've got a new vision and mission there, but the values that you landed on, your stakeholders talked about, debated about, voted, and came back to the drawing board per se and voted again, but your core values, you ended with, uh, these words that really are representative of what we just saw with your students and staff here. So integrity, work ethic, inclusivity, accountability, productive citizenship, collaboration, passion, and resilience. And what are those? Okay? Integrity, acting with honesty and strong moral principles. Work ethic, demonstrating diligence, perseverance, and responsibility. Inclusivity, ensuring all students, staff, and community members feel valued and respected. Accountability, taking ownership of actions, decisions, and commitments. Productive citizenship, preparing students for meaningful contributions to society. These are my definitions. If you don't have these definitions on your plan, so these are, these are what these mean, though. Collaboration, working together to achieve fair goals. That's what strategic planning is. Passion, demonstrating enthusiasm and dedication in learning and teaching. Resilience, overcoming obstacles, adapting to challenges, and persisting in excellence. So those are the core values that your stakeholders landed on and agreed upon. So, uh, next, we move to beliefs. Your beliefs, very similar, and I'm going to read these because they're important and they're critical to your plan. "We believe in providing students with opportunities to take risks, learn from failures, and develop a strong work ethic." So you hear those, some of those things repeated, and what that means, that really is a belief about growth through challenges. You all believe, and your staff believes, and your community believes, that you all can grow through challenges. We all have them, but you can grow through them and get better. Share responsibility. I love this one. Student growth is a partnership between homeschool and the community. It's everybody's responsibility. School district has a heavy, heavy load on their back all the time. Superintendent has a heavy, heavy load on his back all the time. Board, staff, you all do. Everybody has a heavy responsibility, but it's shared. Strategic planning, and hopefully this plan will tighten what you already have, I mean, I've seen it every time I've been here. Y'all are pretty tight as it is, but just, again, pretty awesome. Educator influence, this belief statement, "Staff play a pivotal role in shaping students' intellectual, emotional, and social development." That's from your staff, state board group. That's what they believe, and they should. "We believe in fostering integrity, respect, problem-solving, and accountability in students. That involves character development. Success comes from providing a safe, nurturing, and respectful learning environment." Talked about school safety, we just saw it and, and heard, heard tale of it, so just awesome. Safe and inclusive learning. And again, uh, this belief, "All stakeholders should have opportunities to take risks, learn from mistakes, and develop resilience." Again, encouragement of risk-taking and growth. You all go through life and be afraid of... You all go through life and be afraid of surprises and not try anything new. But we always need to think about what can we do to improve or what can we do to get better. Strategic planning is continuous improvement, it's really the big picture. So after development of the core values and beliefs, we fell back and went to vision and mission. So why did we go that way? Because we needed to know what Lincoln County, what you valued, and what your beliefs were before we developed your vision and your mission. So your vision, you're going to see some of these values and some of your beliefs exhibited in the end with phrases. So let's talk about your vision statement. Lincoln County Schools equipping students to learn, conquer, and succeed. And that did take some debate from the stakeholder group, but it was good debate. It was good debate, it was good respectful debate. But that's what strategic planning is about. It doesn't mean that everybody gets in a room, all 35 or 40 people, and just say, alright, I'm good with that. Everybody has an opinion, it's a valued opinion. But what does that vision statement actually mean? The vision establishes the district's long-term direction, that's what strategic planning is. Five to, or it's 2025 to 2030, it's five-year plan. So it's long-term direction, ensuring students are prepared not just academically, but for life by fostering resilience and success. So that's your vision statement, that was developed again by your stakeholder group. So let's talk about mission. The mission of Lincoln County Schools in partnership with students, staff, parents, and the community is to equip students with the skills necessary to be lifelong productive citizens and never change for global society. What stood out with me as the facilitator as all this was happening is how stakeholder group landed on global society. Of course, there was discussion about your student body and things like that, wanting the kids to come back home. I've got a personal story, my oldest son, he moved away at 16, and I wanted him to come back to Lee County, and he never did. But that's not to say that we don't want our best and brightest to come back and support, but we also need to make sure that we equip them if they want to go somewhere else. And that's what your mission statement says. So it's not to say that you don't want them back, you always want them back. But if they choose to go outside Lincoln County and live, or whatever they choose to do, you equip them with that. And you're doing that here in this district, I'll tell you, you're doing that. So your mission statement, again, mission of Lincoln County Schools in partnership with students, staff, parents, and the community, it's a collaborative process with everybody working together. So that's your vision, mission, your core values and beliefs. Any questions on that before we jump into your key concepts and focus areas? Alright, so following vision, mission, values, beliefs, all those, we actually had SWOT analysis from your department leads who are sitting here. And boy, did they do a fantastic job. And I can't speak highly enough about the work that they did. I think the last comment I made was, the last night I was here, was I would be honored to work with this group of people. Bruce, the entire group, and I mean that with my, with the whole heart because you've got some folks that are committed to the success of each and every child here. This district, their schools, their community. And I saw it every time I was here, and I witnessed it. So that's just, that's just amazing that that happens. But that, again, that comes back to leadership. So let's talk about the key focus areas and SWOT analysis. So SWOT analysis, for those that don't know, we looked at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities for improvement, and threats in each department. So every department had to do a quick share-out, 15 minutes, based upon those four things, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So the way the plan was developed, we really focused on opportunities and weaknesses to develop your actual plan, which is this, in your 25 pager. But I did not want to take all your time tonight because I was spent two, three hours. But if you look at, just for example, curriculum instruction and assessment, you all have the packet. Underneath these, I call them pillars, they're pillars, you would have objectives, strategies, activities, a timeline, and then how you're going to monitor it, and people responsible for each of these key concepts. So let's talk about the key concepts, key focus areas real quick. So school safety, you have an overarching goal. Now, I do want to talk about these goals briefly. Your goal for school safety, ensure the safety and wellbeing of all students and staff through preventive measures, training, and consistent monitoring. Exactly what David did, exactly what you all have done with your safety drills, your later drills, your earthquake, your bus evacuations, what you do with wipe downs, what you did in the weather the other day, what you did when you call school on, call school off. Lots of examples of that you have in your district already. But within that, within each component, your department leads decided on goals and activities they were going to really work on specifically for the next five years. So anyway, people, personnel, and student supports. The goals, strengthen attendance, enrollment, and social, emotional supports through targeted interventions, resources, and partnerships. So again, these were developed based upon your data. It wasn't me saying, this is what you need. I have a list of best practices that I can grow in there. But the last time I was here, Bruce and I talked, and he recommended, and I was 100% agree that they go back with their departments and form small committees and then talk about each component, which is the best way to do this work. Curriculum instruction and assessment, whichever department supports that, because we want to ensure, which is your goal, high-quality instruction through critical alignment and professional development, rigorous academic support. Better programs, maximize the impact of federal funding to reduce disparities and improve academic outcomes for underserved populations. Finance, ensure fiscal responsibility while maximizing resources to support district goals. And again, if you look in your plan, there are multiple objectives and activities to support these goals. Technology, ensure sustainable technology integration to enhance learning, teaching, and operational efficiency. Operations, streamline district operations and strengthen communication to support the success of all schools. So again, this is about all schools and about what you do here, district-wide. Transportation, provide reliable, safe, and efficient transportation for all students. Couple of goals there, and a couple of objectives, improve bus transport efficiency to reduce travel times, address behavior challenges. Again, straight from the SWOT analysis. Food service, expand access to nutritious meals and modernize food service infrastructure. Increase student participation in meal programs by promoting accessible and flexible options. Human resources, ensure excellence in staff recruitment and retention and professional growth. So those are your 10 key areas, or I call them pillars in strategic planning, they can be called anything. What questions do you have about this part or any of it? Next is really what is the most important part of the word, is the rollout. So you roll this out, school, district-wide, community-wide, it needs to be well-publicized, and everybody, everywhere needs to see it and know it. So, and again, it's not just words on paper, it's an actual action plan that you've got to monitor. So my recommendation is to monitor this monthly ordinance. You don't have to monitor every, every component monthly, but at least here a share-out of some component of where we are, things like that. But progress can be tracked through annual reports, stakeholder feedback, that analysis. And, but again, it reflects your commitment as a board, your commitment as a staff and stakeholder group to what you want to do for kids here. And again, strategic planning, it is about the kids, but it's also about support to the staff. The professional development piece, for example, there's a lot of support for your staff that goes into that. So, but each piece in this system needs to link and connect, and they do. So any questions at all? Or, again, I can't say enough, this is one of the best groups that I've ever worked with and had the privilege to work with. If y'all need me, and again, this was at no cost to you all, so other than time. And you all did, your staff put the time and commitment in, and it was, it was one of the best. So I appreciate it, and y'all have me. But y'all do need to make a motion to approve the plan, so y'all can get rolling with this and kick it off. And I want to see it in action, and I can't wait to see it, I'm going to be a big supporter, not because of me, because of what you all are already doing. Y'all are getting it done, so just keep it up and keep on rolling, so.
Any questions? I think it's the next one y'all explaining it.
Well, thank you.
And I said it on one of the sessions, when Tyler couldn't be there, and I thought you did a fantastic job leading the group. And the group was great.
Yes.
Everybody stayed on task and.
Yes, I echo, want to thank Dr. Evans for leading us through this process. And y'all have a plan and ready for the board to look at it and approve it here. Well, again, I'm touched by just being asked to be a part of it. So, and again, I have to say this, y'all got some good in this school board, turning. And I worked together for a long time, being him as daddy, but thank you all very much. And I'm on the hook for anything that you all need, anything y'all need that I can help KEDC. I'm just phone call, email, or text away, and I'll be here anytime, glad to come and just say howdy and visit. So y'all keep up the great work with your kids. That is just outstanding, recognizing them little babies. And I call those big kids, they're babies too, they're babies too. So thank you all, thank you all.
Do I hear a motion to approve the strategic plan? Tyler made a motion second.
Sorry, Graham.
Lisa made the second vote, Lisa.
Nice, Charlie.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Yeah, super good stat. Do I want to add any questions or comments on that?
Only one thing, I didn't, and I may have missed this, I didn't see a report from Crab Orchard for the site-based meeting.
That was during an NPI day, I believe, and we couldn't get a call together that way, so thank you. Didn't win it.
Okay, we'll move to the consent items, any questions? On the consent items, Phillip, not Phillip, but Tyler, I think you had.
On seven B, under the served pro invoices, is any of that covered by insurance or is that, it's going to be covered?
It is. Actually, I had anticipated that insurance would pay the vendors directly, but the adjuster ended up sending the claims payment out to us, and so therefore, we're having to pay the vendor, so. We had a $5,000 deductible on that claim.
Oh, yeah, and then Christine mentioned that Kista under, that is for transportation.
Those were for buses that were purchased years ago, financing for buses. We haven't used Kista since I've been here, we just bought them outright, but we are paying those off from, you know, years ago.
I would like to thank the Blueburn Corporation for their donation of $1,000 for the Kentucky County High School Culinary Program. I think that was very nice, appreciate that greatly. And I always like money coming in. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items? That's seven, item seven, multiple ones over. Jen made motion second, Lisa, vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we'll move to our action items. And we have approved the 2024-2025 Wellness Report Cards, and that's Kathy. This is just our annual report card, and you all got a copy of it. All just time to hit a few slots here and there. We do operate five programs in the county. That's our fresh fruit and veggies, that's on the second page, we operate with a $134,000 on it. This coming year, we're going to have a new nutritional guideline, they are dropping our sodium, so we are going to be late. I'm glad we're having a review this year, not next year. We're 100% CEP, and that comes from such a large number, sad to say, of our direct certification. It's from KATAP, SNAP, homeless, migrant, and Head Start. We are reimbursed for $4.45 per meal, plus we receive an extra 8 cents for every lunch served because of our new follow guidelines and regulations. I put the Smart Snacks Calculator, so principals can always look up the Smart Snacks Calculator to make sure something that you're, you know, you're serving. And make sure that meets the guidelines, of course, appreciate it. Farm to school, we have two farmers, one in Mercer County, they're going to start buying sausage from him. And then we have Tommy Ross, who's in Sterns, Kentucky, has huge greenhouses, 20 of them. So we're going to start purchasing fresh produce from him. Physical activity, we do healthier generation is going to come in hopefully in the first school starts and do a, work with the PE teachers, and hopefully give them some health guidance. And that's about it, I just asked that to you previous. Any questions?
I'll just say that that figure for lunch, all the meals served, the lunch meals alone, was amazing.
We have pretty good participation in all of ours, we're really lucky. Any other questions, discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve the 2024-2025 Wellness Report Card? Lisa made motion, Phillip second, vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you for your support. A B, revised procedure for facility use, lead in.
I'm just asking you guys to approve the revised form, which is 05.31 AP.Doc. 21, which is the application for use of rooms or buildings by out-of-school groups. So you say you have a civic organization or a church, or one of the external booster clubs at the high school that wants to use one of our facilities, cafeteria for a meeting, or the auditorium, or a gym. They have to fill out a form to request that, and then of course, that's approved, it's signed off by the principal, and then you guys approve that each meeting. And just looking at the form, need to be some cleanup in my opinion. We have people that kind of fill the form out, and it's very wordy, the original form. And it's a little bit unclear unless you take time to read through it, what exactly is required. You have to provide proof of insurance, you may be charged for a sodium, you may be charged for a food service worker if you're using equipment in the cafeteria. So it's just to kind of make it more clear with kind of a check mark, checkboxes provided on there so people can kind of see, here's exactly what I need to have, and here's what I should expect to be billed for. So we just need to have this one reading to make this change. And so if you all want to approve this change, I just think the form is clearer and more user-friendly. Didn't really change anything besides, you know, some cleanup and making sure it's just user-friendly.
Any other questions?
It's just the reading.
Oh, it's reading, we don't need that.
Okay, I guess you don't need that, you're reading.
Procedures only have a reading or a review, they're not like policies, so we're just.
Okay, we'll move on to A C, tentative section seven, staff allocation formulas.
So as we discussed last week, we have to provide the tentative section seven staffing allocation formulas for next full year by March the 1st. And then we will be approving the final by May the 1st. So this is the tentative section seven staffing. I did mention one change last week, was the clarification on the security staff, the SROs at each school. I also had emailed you guys that proposed change. And after putting this together and presenting it to all last week, I was actually working with the school's numbers. And there have been times through the years that one of the schools will just dip, you know, slightly below a level. And typically, the board has voted to adjust that. And so there was a change on assistant principals. The cutoff was previously from 901 and above, you would get two assistant principals, and we're asking to drop that to 851. We don't have a school that dropped down to 851, but we're just kind of putting that number there to project in the future instead of having to maybe adjust that every year. But we had a school just drop four below that level, so. And then with regard to specials, it's the same threshold. We're just changing the specials range of 601 to now 850 to get 5.6 specials, and then 851 and above to get 7.30. The same change, it's identical on the secretary and bookkeeper and attendance clerks. Instead of saying from 451 to 900 students, you get one secretary or attendance clerk. Instead of saying from 451 to 900 students, you get one secretary or attendance clerk for eight hours for 240 days and one for eight hours for 185 days. Now that ranges from 451 to 850 and then the bottom category is over 850 students, which on a secretary and attendance clerk would be two for eight hours for 205 days and one for eight hours for 240 days. I know that's a little bit wordy when I'm saying all this. I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, I hit on each level. So, those would be the proposed changes for the tentative staffing. If you guys have any feedback or questions on that, that would be fine.
So, I guess the question would be, the numbers that you proposed are not the attachment that's in the agenda right now? I know you sent it out in an email. I saw it in the email, but it's not the one that's in the meeting right now?
Yeah, that might be. I probably didn't send.
Does that matter?
No, the attachment doesn't matter. And so.
Yeah, I saw it.
Sorry, I did.
Make sure that there's no.
I did make sure to email that to you all, but I did not email it to Kavleen. So, I apologize for that, but I will get the version to you. So, the version I'm asking you all to approve would be the email one. And I think I sent out last Friday, the day after the meeting, so.
Just making sure there's no legality issues.
We good on that?
No, I thought it's all back.
Well, I have it in email. I'm just.
Yeah.
Making sure we're good.
Yeah, good catch. Sorry I left you out. It's good having a keeper.
Any questions? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the tentative section seven staffing allocation formulas for the 2025-2026 school year? Phillip makes a motion. Tyler second. Vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. A D, tentative sections four and five staffing allocation formulas, Leanne.
So, the same, we will approve this tentative allocation previous to March the first and then we'll look at the final in April and no changes from last year, no changes from the meeting last week. So.
Any further questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the tentative section four and section five staffing allocation formulas for the 2026-2025-2026 school year? Jen first, second. Lisa, vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. A E, insurance quotes, Leanne.
Robert's Insurance provided quotes for our student accident insurance for next school year. And I'm asking the board to accept the quote from the Hartford for the 25-26 school year at a slight increase of $625. The total premium will be $81,385.80 and we paid for that from the general fund.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to accept the quote from the Hartford for student accident insurance for the 2025-2026 school year?
I'll make a motion.
Tyler second. Lisa, vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. A F, drug testing services, Leanne.
Just asking you guys to renew our contract with Cornerstone Diagnostics for the 25-26 school year with pricing remaining at the same levels as it is this year. I emailed you all out for price list and I think I did send that to Kavleen to get on there. So, I did one thing right. So, just asking to extend that contract for an additional year.
Any other questions?
Thank you for sending that out.
Yeah, no problem. I always try to remember. I promised things up here I want to send and I did try to send those out. Typically, I do.
We appreciate that.
Do I hear a motion to approve the contract renewal with Cornerstone Diagnostics for the 2025-2026 school year? Jen. Phillip second. Vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
A G, bids for mowing services, Mr. Brad Smith.
Just asking the board to award the mowing bid to Heeler Property Maintenance for the 2025 mowing season per discussions last week.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to award the mowing bid to Heeler Property Maintenance for the 2025 mowing season? Lisa made motion.
I'll say.
Tyler second. Vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. A H, bids for snow removal services, Brad.
Same thing with this, just per discussions last week regarding the snow removal for the properties for the district. I'm asking that we award the bid to Cutting Edge for the 2025 through February 28, 2026, snow removal season, we'll call it.
Okay.
They may be in the middle of snow removal.
Just real quick before you bid, this says starting March first. Who we have now until March first? Who's the current contract?
So, actually I've used them.
We don't have.
This is first, no, because it's the first year we've ever done it, so it's just per usage.
Okay.
We used them back in, I guess, January's first time we ever tried it. So, and it's worked well.
So, technically we're not required to bid this out, but we did bid it out, of course, to get the best price. But as he mentioned, we've just been using Cutting Edge on an as-needed basis since we decided to contract out for snow removal.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I thought it would be better to have someone that we can rely upon instead of hoping that they will, you know, contractually.
It's a good call, Brad.
That's it.
Do I hear a motion to award the snow removal bid to Cutting Edge for a term beginning March 1, 2025 through February 28, 2026?
Make a motion.
Phillip. Jen second. Lisa, vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. And of course, A I has been tabled into March, A J, 2025-2026 school calendar, Mr. Henry.
The academic division has requested that we revise next year's school calendar and convert it to a variable calendar. There'll be eight less instructional days, eight more staff workdays for a total of 13. And this will allow teachers to work on curriculum maps, learning targets and common assessments before the school year begins. It will be a front-loading approach. We can still meet the required 1,062 hours. The first student day would be August the 25th and variable calendar is required that the first student day be no earlier than the Monday closest to the 26th and that's why we're starting so late. And it's also going to give us added flexibility if we need to, you know, flex some of our hours or whatnot. We've got bank time in case we have to miss for snow or whatnot in addition to our NPIs.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the 2025-2026 school calendar? Tyler made motion. Lisa second. Vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. A K, 2026-2027 school calendar.
This calendar looks almost identical to our current calendar. We have 170 instructional days, four holidays, September 7 is Labor Day, November 26, Thanksgiving, December 25, Christmas, and January 18, Martin Luther Jr. Day. We have four flexible professional belt day on August 7, November 2, November 25 and February 15. Our opening day is August 11. Our closing day is May 21. And we have five staff workdays, just like this year, it's the 13th, which will be our next school year. And we have four makeup days, May 24 through May 27.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the 2026-2027 school calendar? Jen made motion second. Lisa second. Vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. A L, MOA with the Commonwealth of Kentucky for SEBT.
The Cabinet for Health and Family Services is providing a grant award to cover expenses incurred for SEBT implementation and operation. We've already been doing the work and we qualify for a $6,000 maximum award. I'm requesting that we approve the contract so that we can get paid for the work that we've already been doing.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the memorandum agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky for the summer electronic benefits transfer? Jen made a motion.
I'll say.
Tyler second. Vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. A M, revised procedures addressing homeless students.
Some of our procedures need to be updated to meet Title I requirements. These are practices that we already have in place, but they need to be reflected in writing. For example, 06.32 AP.1, McKinney-Bento requires us to bus students to their school of origin. This is something that we've already been doing, but we won't put it into the procedure now. 09.12 AP.1, our procedures may not have an intake form and Title I requires us to describe how we identify homeless students. So, we're adding an intake form to show how that we're going to identify these students. And then 09.12 AP.25, this is going to show how we award partial credits for homeless students. It defines our credit recovery process for students, graduation procedures, gives hot priority placement into after-school programs and tutoring. And these procedures have been reviewed by the board attorney and also the high school principal and the counseling staff.
Any questions? Do I hear, this is just the first reading.
This is just a reading.
Just a reading.
Okay, no action meeting. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A N, 2025-2026 eligibility criteria for Head Start.
In preparing for the continuation grant for the upcoming year and according to 45 CFR 1302.94, we're seeking approval for our 25-26 eligibility criteria for Head Start and early.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the 2025-2026 eligibility criteria for Head Start preschool and early Head Start programs?
Motion.
Jen second. Lisa second. Vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. A O, 2024-2025 revised early Head Start calendar.
Early childhood calendar. The early childhood program is looking to revise our 24-25 calendar to reflect the amendment and the changes needed for the January 10th and the January 31st no school days for the Sunday in the water.
Okay. Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the revised early childhood and Head Start preschool calendars for the 2024-2025 school year? Lisa made motion.
I'll say.
Tyler second. Vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. And we tabled A P, move on to A Q, transportation waiver, approve the transportation waiver for early childhood.
According to the Head Start Performance Standards 1303.71, as part of our continuation grant, we are seeking approval for the transportation waiver required by the Head Start regulations.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the transportation waiver for early childhood? Jen made a motion.
Second.
Phillip second. Vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. A R, early childhood training plan.
So, in accordance with the Head Start Act 648D1, as part of the continuation grant, we're looking to approve the 25-26 school year Policy Council and Board of Education Training.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Tennessee Policy Council Board of Education Training? Tyler made motion second. Jen second. And vote Lisa.
Yes.
Phillip.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
And I vote yes. I've asked our attorney, Grant, to review the policies on roles and responsibilities of board members.
One of the things that came up on tonight's agenda actually is a good starting point in the discussion about administrative procedures only getting a reading, it's not voted on by the board. And that's a good example of the distinction between what the board's roles and responsibilities are compared to the administration. Policies obviously are adopted by the board. They get two readings. A Ps are essentially the administration's superintendent saying, board, this is how I understand this policy. This is what I understand the policy to mean and this is how my staff is implementing that policy that you all adopted. So, the Ap's become part of that formal policy and procedure, but it's really the administration telling the board, this is how your policy is going to be implemented by the administration. So, it's an information item that certainly gives you all thought, yeah, I think they've missed the mark. That's not really what we meant when we adopted that policy. Then that feedback is the opportunity to say, yeah, that's not what we, that's not what we thought we were adopting. And if that's what you've understood it to be, we need more discussion or we need to clarify our policy. So, that's a good first example. One of the things, before I forget about it, a problem that thankfully this board doesn't have, but when there's no problem is a good time to prepare for a future problem. And like a prenuptial agreement, you sign it when everything's going really well for when things fall apart. Yuro's Code of Ethics has, let me pass those down so you all can see, it's the board member code of ethics. Yuro's in, that number eight, the one I've just passed down to you, has a number nine and a number 10 for Yuro's consideration. These are truly based on situations I've observed in other districts over the years, have not observed here. But I thought it would be a good time with what Christine asked me to address to potentially get you all to consider adding this. I think there's a bill pending in the General Assembly where they may be formalizing a code of ethics for board members. I don't do a whole lot to follow pending legislation. I've got enough tasks, keep track of the laws that are actually on the books, not the ones that they're threatening us with. But I think there may become a formal code of ethics for board members with some enforcement mechanisms. But until then, this is just a self-imposed, this is you all kind of telling each other this is what our standards ought to be when we deal with each other, with our district. Number nine and number 10 on this sample policy. Number nine is be responsible and respectful in their use. This is board members will be responsible and respectful in their use of electronic communications and social media by protecting confidential information received in the role of board member, avoiding group texts or email chats which might violate public meetings laws, comply with record retention rules where applicable, avoid communications and posts which negatively impact the reputation of the district or which interfere with or disrupt the education mission of the district and by clearly indicating the content is the member's personal view and is not on behalf of the district or board collectively. And number 10, based on a really bad experience in another district, is board members will avoid comments and questions during public meetings to teachers, administrators and other staff members who present to the board, which give any appearance that the board member is assessing or questioning the employee's job performance. These individuals are on the school board agenda to inform or enhance board member understanding, not to be embarrassed, evaluated or break the goal. Employees supervisors evaluate the job performance, not. That's for your consideration of potentially adding those two items to Yuro's Code of Ethics. If that started to be a problem with an individual board member and then you try to add something like this, it's real clear publicly, you're adding something to address a single board member. And it's good to have those things on a code of ethics ahead of time before it becomes a problem so that then you can just point out, if somebody starts to cross one of those lines, to say, we've adopted these rules that we've all agreed to bound by and you're brushing up against that line that we've adopted. So, that's, you all can discuss that, consider that. It doesn't have to be approved. It's just a suggestion.
If we chose to add it, then it would be, would we take action on it?
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Yeah, you would do two readings of that as an amendment to a policy, just like any other policy. And, you know, you all, when you're reviewing something like that, feel free to go through the first eight as well. It's a good time for discussion and feedback because, again, this is entirely a self-imposed code of ethics. It's the board telling the community and the constituent groups in the district and each other. You're really saying, this is what we, how we agree to behave toward each other. This is how we agree to conduct business. So, it's fair game to have that as a discussion, especially with. So it's fair game to have that as a discussion, especially with a couple of new members. I think it's good for everybody to be on the same page about that. Is it outdated? Are there things in there that need to be tweaked? That might be worthwhile, having that as a little bit of a discussion item in our company. Overall, as far as roles and responsibilities, the board, the board is looking at the big picture. I think the, with what Mr., with what Dr. Evans, I have trouble not just calling him Jimmy, but what Dr. Evans presented to you all, you know, there's, there's big picture stuff that the board is responsible for. And it's not the day-to-day. It's not dealing with individual employees. It's not dealing with individual students, not trying to put out any individual fires. It's developing all the plans and the processes and the procedures so that the people in the trenches have the tools that they need to deal with the individual employee, the individual student, and put out the individual fires. So the big things that are on that list of, of, that's not the hands-on day-to-day stuff, but the big picture things for board members. You adopt a school calendar. You set graduation requirements. You adopt the student discipline code. Over the board can expel a student. You exercise corporate power. So those are things like entering into contracts. That's why there's always contracts to be approved on. Nobody else has the authority to enter into a contract on behalf of the board. You exercise the corporate power. You are the corporate, you're the board of directors of a corporation. Buying and selling property, that's a corporate power that only the board can do. Receiving gifts, that's why those are listed on your agenda. It's because only the boards can do that. Despite the fact that Carr took most personnel items away from school boards 35 years ago, there are still a couple of personnel items that do still fall on board. One of those is if a administrator is demoted, if they have more than three years of experience as an administrator and they are demoted back to the classroom or to a lower, lower level, they can request a hearing, and the board is basically the jury on that demotion hearing. It's just an unusual thing that if the superintendent demoted an administrator, you all sit as the jury on that hearing to decide whether the superintendent was right or wrong to demote. Another one that rarely comes up, I've literally only ever seen it twice representing school districts here for just over 17 years. If a certified employee submits their resignation in writing, and the superintendent accepts it, and then they say, "Can I withdraw my resignation?" The board gets to vote on whether the certified employee gets to withdraw their resignation or not. It's incredibly weird.
Would that be closed or open session?
A good question. I think there's a good argument that that can be a closed-session discussion, but the Open Meetings Act is not real clear on that specific. It's such an unusual provision. The, you all get to set the qualifications of employees and decide, you know, job descriptions. The example that I've always given is if the board said they want every principal to have a doctorate, you can adopt a principal job description that says every principal has to have a doctorate. It may not be wise, but that's within the scope of the board's authority to say every principal has to have a doctorate. And part of that also is just within salary schedule, which you all can incentivize, things like getting a doctorate. I don't even know if that's within Yuro's salary schedule, but some boards have a, an additional stipend that goes with achieving a doctorate. Allocating resources, allocating staff, you did that, took that action tonight. The, one of the other personnel matters that's within the authority of the board, educational leave, professional leave, and medical leave are all listed under KRS 161.770, and that actually says the board make grant or the board shall grant. So that's why you had two medical leave requests on the agenda tonight because only the board can approve medical. If somebody leaves to go on MOA to work at KDE, the board has to approve that MOA technically that person's going on professional leave. So the board is approving professional leave for that employee to leave to work somewhere else in the education field. Those are just some of the unusual things that, obviously levying taxes, that's part of your corporate power. Nobody else can make that decision for you all. And then there's several positions you all are allocated to appoint. Board secretary, board treasurer. You're allowed to hire a board attorney. And obviously, the superintendent is the only employee that you all get to evaluate. But that's, that's basically the, the thumbnail. I could spend an hour talking about roles and responsibilities for the various groups. Superintendent, principals, FBDMs. But that's, I think, a pretty good summary of what the board's authority is and kind of the level of authority you all operate at. It's not that day-to-day situation-to-situation mode.
Thank you. The short time that I've been on the board and the trainings that I've attended and some personal experiences, I just wanted to reiterate that one person on the board never speaks for the board. You always need to make sure that you say, "This is my personal opinion," and, and never speak for the board because we only do that here at the meetings and when we have. The other one is getting involved in the day-to-day operations. As Tyler and I are both educators, we know how easy it is for us to be talking to somebody, and first thing we know, you want to be recommending something to them. So I really have to work on that a lot. And then always remembering, if a parent or someone, you need to refer them to the chain of command. If they call, you can listen, and then you can tell them that you're shared with the superintendent, what they need, have they gone through the chain of command. Those are the things that seem to pop up when I'm talking to other board members in other districts that really can cause the board member to get into serious problems. So I just really caution you all and listen carefully to those meetings when you go next weekend to the conference. But I really appreciate Grant doing this for us, and I think it's enlightening for us, maybe not just us, but for you all as well, some of the policies that we're dealing with, that there were two things he mentioned. I didn't even know that we had anything to do with that, and that was if somebody got a, changed their mind on wanting to resign. I didn't know we were included in that process. So we appreciate it very much, and I think I need to go back to the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Lisa first. Tyler second. Do I hear a vote Lisa? Philip?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you all for being patient.